Regular meeting of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange. As has been noted, we are back in council chambers for the first time since March. Appreciate all of the hard work of the staff in making this possible. As you will note, we have implemented social distancing requirements by trying to block off rows. We have also asked staff to sanitize the chamber prior to our meeting, which was done this afternoon. So we have done, we're taking the precautions. Obviously, we will remain, council members and staff will remain masked during our meetings, and we ask all of those in attendance, as well as the speakers who may come to the podium, to remain masked at all times. We're trying to continue to follow the best COVID guidance that we can. Appreciate all of you helping us out with that and complying. Obviously, we continue to monitor the situation. Just this morning in our work session, we had the latest report from the hospital and the Department of Public Health about the latest numbers in our community, which we will continue to monitor. And if it becomes apparent that either meeting in this location, or even in-person meetings at all are dangerous, we will make the necessary adjustments. But for now, we're going to certainly give this a try, hoping that we can make this work. We know it's been inconvenient for lots of reasons to be meeting off premises. We will begin our meeting tonight with an invocation, and I'm glad to see Dr. Derek Lewis from Biblical History Center is with us. So Derek, if you'll come to the podium, as I said, come to the podium, but if you will, remain masked during all of the remarks and offer our invocation. That will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. I will ask everyone to stand.
We come to you at a very difficult time, and that's probably when we come to you most often. When things are going well, we seem to think to know, we know what to do, and then we get to times like this, and we don't. So in the middle of all of the abnormality, we're asking for a little normalcy tonight, the ability to do some business that needs to be done, to recognize people that have gone above and beyond. And we want to, at this moment, thank you for giving the strength, wisdom, and courage to all of those frontline responders who are going through so much right now. They are the true heroes during this time. We are encouraged by the chance of a vaccine, but more importantly, right now, we are encouraged that you give us strength and wisdom and peace and science and all the things that we need, so that we can continue to get through this difficult time and get back to normal. Thank you for all of those that are here today. It's encouraging to see a good turnout, and we pray that you will bless this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and pure and innocent.
Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of our regular council meeting held November 10th. I would entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We are delighted tonight to be able to present a 25-year service award to one of our own. Glad to see, have the opportunity to present this to Lieutenant Eric Lor. Ask Eric if you and your family would come to the podium and join me and Chief Deckmar. So I think that most of the council members know Lieutenant Lor, and some of you have gotten to know him a little bit better this afternoon. So Eric was hired as a patrol officer on November 27, 1995, and completed his field training officer program on May the 31st of 1996. April 15, 1998, he was promoted to detective and transferred to the Criminal Investigations Division with an emphasis placed on domestic violence investigations. On January 1, 2005, Sergeant Lor was transferred from Investigations to the Patrol Division, assigned as the shift sergeant for A Squad. In May 2006, he graduated from Columbus State University with a bachelor's science degree. He was also promoted to lieutenant and transferred from A Squad to serve as one of Patrol Division's administrative lieutenants. In August of 2007, he was transferred from Patrol to Criminal Investigations, responsible for both CIS and SIU daily operations. In June of 2008, Lieutenant Lor transferred again from CIS to Patrol, resuming responsibilities of supervising four patrol squad segments. August 16, 2010, Lieutenant Lor transferred from Patrol to the Training Division, where he assumed responsibility for coordinating all mandatory training for agency personnel. In December 2010, Eric graduated from the Georgia Command College at Columbus State University, having earned his master's degree in public administration. In 2016, he spearheaded efforts to transition from presenting the DARE program to the LEAD program within our public school system. The law enforcement against drugs program expanded the topical areas of instruction delivered to our youth, including bullying and gang intervention. Lieutenant Lor's focus continually remains on the members of the La Grange Police Department. Historically, Lieutenant Lor has met with family members of recruits prior to the recruits going to the academy, and as a means to welcome them as part of the LPD family. As part of that, Lieutenant Lor provides training related to the challenges of law enforcement. He enhanced that training this year by seeking out an expert in the field of emotional support for law enforcement officers who did a Train the Trainer class for Lieutenant Lor and other officers. Lieutenant Lor has since began providing that training to recruit officers and their families. In May of this year, Lieutenant Lor transferred from Training to the Patrol Division, serving now as the Division's operational lieutenant, responsible for all aspects of that Division's operations. Will you please join me in thanking Lieutenant Lor for 25 years of service? Chief Deckmar, anything you would like to add to?
Well, there is so much, but I'll just hit a couple that, you know, I think recognized as cutting edge. One is he developed the civil rights curriculum for our officers' training. We were probably one of the first in the state to develop a protocol for rape victims that did not want to report the rape, but in working with the Harmony House, we created anonymous reporting where they can go in, have the test, have the rape kit done, and it's held, and at some point, if they change their mind, that evidence has been preserved. He also spearheaded a review every other year of our domestic violence services and brought in the various partners that we have relationships with to increase the services that we provide to victims of domestic violence. Most recently, the BOLA rap, he does a lot of our R and D research and development on either emerging technologies or cutting-edge trends, and he piloted that program and came up with the specific recommendations that were incorporated in the BOLA rap product. I would characterize Eric as a utility player. Wherever you put him, he's going to assume those responsibilities in a serious fashion and look for ways to improve whatever role he plays. So I know I speak for your colleagues here, and I say we appreciate the 25, and we look forward to your next 20.
Lieutenant Lor, anything you'd like to say to the council?
Well, first, I apologize for not saying rap, rap, rap the first call, but I did get it the second time. No, very quickly, when I moved down here 25 years ago from Connecticut, I was not expecting to stay down here for 25 years. What we've done at this agency in the city over the past 25 years, you know, it's just amazing. So thank you all for the opportunities. Cat, file, chief, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant. If we can, I don't want us to bunch up, but if we can, just kind of stand where we are, and then Eric, if y'all would like to come here in the center, we'll do a group photo with the council. Katie and Hunter and everybody.
How about you, Derek?
Believe it or not, I am smiling.
Yeah, everyone smiled. People tell me they can see if you're smiling or not by looking at your eyes. I haven't quite figured that out yet. I'm not that good, but I'm smiling and showing teeth. And thank you, Eric, for the demonstration of the BOLA rap this afternoon. I'm glad I was able to get here in time. I know that Councilman Gaskin enjoyed it, and...
Thank you.
I think Councilman Adams wants to use the taser sometimes, right? Is that? No public hearings tonight in our delegations. Alonzo Roberts is here to talk about the Project Safe Neighborhood. Good evening. I'm sorry I pulled the mic down for the photo. If you want to pull that back up.
I'm a part of Project Safe Neighborhood, which is through Mike. So I want him to give you some information on Project Safe Neighborhood before we start.
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody, the mayor, councilman, staff, and the public. I just want to say a little bit about Project Safe Neighborhood. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it tonight, but come back in 2020 and do a formal presentation. Project Safe Neighborhood is an initiative that we're trying to bring to this community through the U.S. Attorney General's Office with Mr. BJ Park. And so basically, it is to have a customized version of it here in the local areas, where we address some of the issues in our community, in our neighborhoods, such as housing, jobs, employment, entrepreneurs, big creative businesses, and also program for our households, families, and kids. And so right now, we're right now in the discussions. We've met with Chief Deckmar and Lieutenant Strickland last month. A lot of the programming for the teams has a component for intervention, prevention, and it's called, where did Mr. Strickland go? Suppression. That's the terminology they use. And so right now, we're in talks and planning with the different agencies of the community to put this thing together so that we can roll it out to the public come 2021. We have started with what we call an anti-gang training program that we had last month, which I had asked Mr. Roberts to be a part of, of his gang affiliations and other gang members, because we really feel that if we can get our ex-members of gang involved in our community, it'll be a positive impact on the kids that we're trying to keep out of gangs. So we've had some training. The U.S. Attorney General sent down some people to do some training for a program called Credible Messenger, where we are training people from all throughout the community, ex-gang leaders, principals, pastors, concerned citizens, parents, anybody, council members, and the law enforcement community on how to come in and do some mentorship for young people and young adults in our community. We had a nice turnout. We had members of the community to come in, also law enforcement, the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, DJJ, Justice Little Kane. And so we're hoping to grow that, and I have asked Mr. Roberts here, because of his experience in the community, to move aboard, and let's combine our resources so we can reach those that are in the poverty area of our community and get them educated and trained and developed to be participating citizens in our society. Any questions?
Does this training, of course, I'm sure we're going to learn more about it, but does it have a component to it so that you try to mentor the children to actually become police officers in the future? That that's a good career path, so that we can bring these younger people that are living in the community to come back to the police community? Is that, is there any type of component to it?
Oh, most definitely. You know, we have components where we're asking individuals from all walks of life to come in and talk about what they do, what their careers, or give their testimony, to give kids, give kids an idea of what's available to them in the future. Growing up here in La Grange myself, when I graduated from high school, I didn't know exactly what I wanted to do in life, but I knew what I did want to do. And so I went out and traveled and saw the world, and I found out there was some things out there that I didn't discover in La Grange. But by getting out there, I also realized La Grange wasn't such a bad place either. And so I was able from exposure to define what I wanted out in life and pursue it. But to answer your question, yes.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion from Councilman Mitchell, because it's something that we often talk about, is needing to recruit more officers for the public safety pipeline. I appreciate you putting this together, and I know the U.S. Attorney, and I know Chief Deckmar's worked with the U.S. Attorney's Office in the past, and I'm excited that we're going to be potentially a pilot, as it sounds like, for a program that they're doing in a broader context. And I appreciate right there at the end where you commented that you were bringing people to the table and collaborating, because that's always, that's always one of my pet peeves, is when somebody wants to go out and kind of do things in a silo and not connect all of the various aspects of the community. So I applaud you for doing that. Any questions for Mike on that aspect of it? I wanted to, Mr. Roberts, I wanted to let you know, you were talked about this morning in a very positive way in the work session, from the work you're doing to help clean up the community. And I just want you to know, I've seen that, and several council members have, staff has, and appreciate you taking that initiative. I know you've been working closely with, as you've attended some of the city's cleanups, and now you're kind of expanding that into other areas and bringing more communities into the program, and I think that's great. And so I appreciate your leadership on that.
I also wanted to just add that, and started at the end of last year, there's an effort to put together what they call the Neighborhood Coalition. I don't know if anybody's heard of that, or anything, Neighborhood Coalition? And the Neighborhood Coalition is an effort to organize our various neighborhoods in our communities, such as Three Point and Calumet Village. And so we've identified some other neighborhoods, such as Freedom Hill, Bell Line, what else? An area that's called Footline. Okay? West Side. And so we're in the process now of going into the neighborhoods door-to-door, trying to organize the neighborhoods so they can receive some of the resources that are available through various agencies, such as, you know, cleaning up the house, renovating houses, cleaning up the streets, what's the organization, the Neighborhood Watch, and other. So they'll be positioned to apply for other resources to the neighborhoods. And I definitely want to come back and talk to the councilman in District Two about certain areas, and so I could catch them up to speed as well.
Sounds great. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that.
I'm addressing you all as a father, a grandfather, and a citizen of La Grange. I came to La Grange in 81, I believe. My mom sent me here. This is her hometown. She sent me here because I was gang-banging real bad. She wanted to change my way of life, and by her sending me here was a great help. I mean, La Grange has been tremendous to me. La Grange has taught me how to be a family man, how to be involved in my community, and all of that as well. So I appreciate La Grange, I really do. And that's why I'm so passionate about the things that goes on in La Grange, especially with the youth. I'm a former pastor, a licensed minister, had a youth group, did various things. I started activist work in the 80s, while I was working with kids and bringing them into mentoring them as well. I also was yet still speaking on the gang activities, even as a minister, trying to get to our young people. When I started noticing the gangs coming to La Grange was in early, like, 1994, but they were little cliques. They were like number-hill cliques, they're going to gangs. When they started getting heavy in La Grange was in like 2000. When they got what you would call official, official means they're plugged, they're plugged with other cities, other states, is in 2020. Jones, if we came unofficially gang state under the leadership of other gangs, the Bloods, the Crips, and all that, in 2012. And since then, since I've been out of prison, from 2012 all the way up to now, the violence has increased, 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 and it has increased in the black community as well. And my passion is, if I can change the outlook of young men and use my experience of seeing murders, drive-by shootings, I have 13 friends that are dead from gang violence, 13 of them, and they all died upon a 21-years-old, 16, 14, 17-years-old at that. So I also come to you as a community activist and a community organizer, which I try to do, like you said, with the cleanup. I'm trying to do that as well. I come to speak on the violence that's happening in our city and our city streets. One thing is, the gang violence, me being a former gang member, knows gang violence. I know gang violence. We have to somehow, some way, get hold to our young men, because now gangs, when I grew up to get in gangs, it was a way of survival, because they made me hook you, you know? Well, now people get in gangs because it's a fashion now. It's cool to be a gang. It's cool to be a crip. It's cool to be a Blood. It's cool to be a gang disciple. It's not a way of life anymore, where you had to survive in the city where you were brought up in. Now we got kids that are A students, that are going to college, that's claiming to be in a gang. And so somehow, we have to turn that view around to show that our kids, that that's not the way to go. That is not the way to go. The murders of our black males by the hands of other black males is mind-boggling. We have had so many deaths in La Grange. We just had, what, two that happened in La Grange by the hands of other black men. My job is to try to bring prevention and programs. To go out here and see programs that will benefit our kids, that will give our kids something to do in our neighborhoods. I know we got basketball, we got football, we got Little League, but every student, now every child is not geared to that. Everybody don't want to play basketball, or baseball, or be on the Little League team. So aside of that, we have to come up with something else that will get our kids' attention, and to make them understand that the streets, there's nothing but death in the streets, when you're part of the streets. So we brought in the gang program from Atlanta, Georgia, by a young gentleman by the name of Art Power. He's an ex-gang member, he's certified. Atlanta, Georgia works with him, the Secretary of State works with him, the Justice Department works with him. So we had him come down here and give us some training. We had Justice Little there, we had the Sheriff Department there. We also invited the gang unit, but for some reason, they couldn't make it, but they did send us to patrol, and we appreciate that. But I don't need patrolmen to come. I need the gang unit to be there. I need them to be there to see that we're serious about what we're doing, that we're serious about saving the lives of our young black men. From ranging from the age of, right now, in La Grange, the starting of range of gang activity is introduced is maybe 13. But when they become officially gang members, is that 16. They come officially gang. Our job, and what we need to do, is somehow, some way, and this is what I'm asking for you all here, to come up with some kind of way, or solutions, or programs that would gear to these type kids that are at risk. You might say, well, who's at risk? You say that everybody want to be a gang member now, well, who's at risk? Well, the ones that's in poverty areas are more at risk than those that come from two-parent homes. Those that come from single mother homes are at risk. The reason why I gang-bang is because I come from a single-parent home. My moms had to work. I had no supervision. And so when I looked out to the streets, I had no big brothers, because I'm the oldest, I'm the oldest child. I wanted to be a part of something. I wanted to fit in. And so when I seen that influence outside, and all what they were doing, I fit in. Half of your young men that join gangs, believe it or not, are looking for directions. They're looking for directions. They're looking for somebody to lead them, because maybe the father is not there. Maybe the uncle is not involved. But here you got this neighborhood gangster or gang member who's wearing a flashy coat, who's flashing the money, and showing him some attention. That's how he recruits him, by buying the shoes, buying everything that he needs, that he desires, on designer standpoint. We have to get involved. The city must get involved even more, down from the mayor to the city council. You got to be visible. You can't just be visible sitting here, but we need you to come in our communities. We need you to come to our events, when we sponsor an event. We need you to have the passion and the love for our children. And you can't do it just by sitting behind desks and discussing things. You have to come out there and show these kids that you love them. Show these kids that you're there for them. Show these kids that you're behind them. That's a part of prevention. That's how you start prevention. Prevention needs to start in the black community at a young age. We can't just depend on the schools. We can't depend on the schools. We can't just depend on the churches. We all have to do this together, you and me. There are programs, that like Project Safe Neighborhood, that invited me to join them. I have our own organization that we started three years ago that's called Try New Gemma. I'm one of the founders. There's other things that I'm trying to get into, but my main goal and my main heart is to curtail the violence that we're hiding among black young men because of gang affiliation. These guys went to school together. These guys played on playgrounds together. They fought together. When it comes to division, when the Bloods come in, the Bloods might go get this one and this one, they might be best friends. But here's a Blood and here's a Crip. Now they can come in. Blood and here's a Crip. Now they can come in. I had best friends that I spent the night with, slept with, that I was shooting at, because they was in an opposite gang, just because of that. So we have to kill that concept, and we got to show them love. We got to show them that we're concerned. We just can't talk about it. We got to be about it. So I'm asking the city. I asked the police chief. He's been helping as well. We've been having meetings. I've been having meetings with the gang investigators with Mark Caveter. Me and Mark Caveter had a great dialogue, but now we have a new one, so I have to get to know him as well. We have to pour all our strength, all of our resources into cleaning up our streets. We know we're going to have violence. We're going to have violence. We know that. But the break that we have violence in the city of La Grange from the time that I got here in nineteen eighty to two thousand has tripled. It has tripled. Homicides, shooters, drive-by shooters. I came up here last year and let you all hear the Elm Street shooting. You heard all the guns. Never, you would have thought you was in Iraq somewhere, Iran somewhere. All of this is going on in the black community. And it makes me feel like that we say, hey, even in the black community, we say, hey, it's not happening to my child, so I'm going to leave it alone. It takes all of us to be concerned about one child and to change that child's direction, because if that one child is on the path of being wrong or being bad, just imagine how much influence he got on somebody else. He go out there and get one. He go out there and get two. He go out there and get three. Then you have a gang problem. In La Grange, we don't have a gang problem. We have a gang issue. And what I mean by a gang problem is that, a gang problem is when you have bodies dropping every day. We have homicide rates every day, home invasions every day, drive-by shootings every day. If you look at the news, you see Chicago, how it's just chaotic up there. A gang issue is when you have gangs come into your community and starting to gravitate and elevate to that situation. We do not want that to get here in La Grange. So we're going to be bringing you all a layout, a platform on what we're doing. I just wanted to give you the introduction tonight, but we'll be coming back soon to ask for your help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, okay.
So I just, I hear what you're saying, and I keep up with you on Facebook. I appreciate the, a lot of the things you say. I don't agree with you on everything. But seriously, do you not feel, or do you feel, that having a, if a gang member, sixteen, seventeen, whatever, eighteen, twenty, if he goes and shoots up a house or shoots somebody, do you not believe that we need to be putting every resource we got to go after him and put him in prison for as long as we can? So we on the same page on that?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
I'm trying to reach those that we can reach to stop from getting to that level. I'm also trying to reach those that even if they're on that level, they can come. I was on that level, sir. I was that person you're talking about. I was that person at fourteen years old that carried thirty-eight that shot in your house. I was that person that see your young, your young man, your young gentleman in your house, and step to him and tell him, you got a choice. You're going to either get in this gang, or you're going to pay protection for you. That was me. That's who I was. We don't want that. So yes, I agree with that. I agree with the prosecutor to the fullest extent. But in that, that does not also solve the problem. We have to get to their minds. Like someone got to me. Somebody got to me. Well, a couple of people got to me. A couple of people grabbed me up. Then this young man said, young man, you're better than that. I can see you better than that. You got more potential than that. And that's what it takes. I had older men in the gentleman, I mean, in the community. I had activists in the community that was there, that was visible. I'm just going to say it like this, and it might hurt, but we have no visible activist in the black community that's being activist, visible. We really don't. We don't have them out there spending time. You have to spend major time. I spend major time out in these streets. I told Deckmar yesterday, when we had our meeting with him yesterday, I said, y'all might don't realize how endangered I am, how I endanger my life by speaking on Facebook about gang activity, about downplaying gang activity, about calling young men out. I regret my life. Every day I drop around, I could be shot. I could be killed just because I'm a voice. But you know what? It don't matter. It doesn't matter.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate what you said tonight. I do. And I appreciate your sharing your own history and your own background, and certainly appreciate the work you're doing in the community. And I think, just to piggyback on the exchange you had with Councilman Mitchell, I mean, I think we all share the same goals. And we've been talking about, we've been talking about gangs in La Grange as long as I've been mayor because of the uptick that you said that happened in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, that timeframe. So it's an ongoing issue. My guess is we're going to continue talking about it, unfortunately, for many years to come. But I appreciate the efforts that you and Mike and others are putting in to try and address it. And just my word of encouragement is to continue working closely with Chief Deckmar, with the staff, because, you know, that's where, that's what's so critical, is that we make sure that we have the resources in the community, both on the enforcement side, but also on the prevention side. And I think that, I think that's a goal that we all share, and I look forward to hearing more about it as, you know, plans develop. I look forward to hearing more about it and certainly appreciate, appreciate all of the relationships that you have formed with the community.
So while you're here, could you give us a little glimpse into what was the turnaround for you? I mean, I know you're an ex-gang member. What was that real turning point for you? Because I think that, you know, there may be some kid that may be talling right now.
The real turning point for me is a horrible story. I had a young friend that was not a part of our gang. And one night, three opposite gang members pulled up and called me out. And I was with, we was with two young ladies, and I told them, today is not the day. We'll do this some other time. Well, my best friend, who was fourteen at the time, stopped mouthing out at the other guy. He had nothing to do with it. Well, he got hit. He got knocked out. When I went to help him, the guy, Vernus, came up with a thirty-eight. And he said, okay, you want to play Superman tonight? Let me see how hard your chest is. Let me see, can you stop this book? I said, you got it. When they left, I picked them up off the ground. He was crying. He was embarrassed, upset. He said, I want to join. I said, no, you're not joining, bro. You're not doing that. You go to school, your parents work. You're not going to do this. I found my gang, about thirty of them that night. They was drinking and smoking. He was there with me. He crying. He embarrassed. He telling me I let him get jumped on. I said, no, I didn't. So they told me, it was up to me if he wanted to get in or not. At that time, we called it blessed in. When I'm jumping, it was blessed in. If you know me, I put you in the gang. He's told me, if you don't let me come this way, I'm going to do it anyway. It's going to happen anyway. My me being his best friend, I felt like, well, if I let him do it, I can keep an eye on him. I can keep him out of trouble, because he's a youngster. He got in. We walked the streets, thirty of us. We had bats. We had garden hose. We had two-by-fours. We had forty-five. We found opposite gang members. A young gentleman that was about naked size. We... He cried, and he was begging God to save his life. I'm sitting there. I'm looking at him. He's begging, God, please save me. God, please save me. It made nothing to them. They sat him on his knees with a balloon in the back, hit him in his face three or four times. When he fell off the ground, they beat him. They beat him. They beat him. This went on for about twenty minutes. I said, I can't do this no more. Can't do this no more. As my leader takes the forty-five out of his pocket, he clicks his back. First, he takes the young man, he ain't a beast to the ground. Then he pistol-whips him. By this time, the young man is in convulsion. He's yawning on himself. I know he's about to die. And he took the gun and put it to his head. And I saved his life that night. I said, don't do it, man. He said, what you mean, don't do it? And he pulled the gun on me. He said, are you trying to save him? Nah, I ain't trying to save him. I said, let him live and let him go back and be an example of what we would do to you if you're part of a gang. It clicked on him then. That sounded real good to him. Let him suffer. When he laid there, police came. They didn't do nothing. They smoked their cigarettes while this man was, blood was coming. You could see blood. This is why I'm emotional, because it bring it back. You could see blood gushing out of his head while he's laying there. We smoked our marijuana around him while he was in convulsions. We went to a park of the neighborhood where they couldn't see us, and we watched. Police came. They didn't do nothing. They said, well, they'll go another. Ammonals came in the neighborhood. They smoked as well. Till they finally put him on a stretcher. That was the breaking point. But what was most definitely the breaking point was, this young man had two collapsed lungs, two broken legs, ribs were broke, had a plate in his head. When he came out, he was his size with a halo on his head on a ten-speed bike with a shotgun looking for us. It didn't teach him anything. It didn't teach him anything. That was my breaking point, right there. I said, we living like animals. We living like silages. And this young man seemed deaf. He cried to God that night, and it still didn't change his mind. That was my breaking point.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Sorry for the tears.
That's okay.
It was understandable, but thank you for, thank you for sharing. It's powerful.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
I just remained silent. I was just writing down some things. Okay, I just want to first thank Mr. Roberts for all that he's said. I've been seeing, I just didn't know exactly all the things he's been doing. And I want to thank for all he's doing for the city of La Grange, for our children, because as a councilman, I don't know what to do. I do know that I'm affected because I deal with the parents, a mother, a father, that come in and their son or their child is dead, and I deal with that. And people ask, they ask me sometimes, you know, are you all immune to that? No way. You just, you never get immune to death, but especially a young child. And I've had to, I've had to do too many of them. One is too many. I heard him say the crime rate is going up. I don't know, our report always say that the current crime rate is going down, but one is too many. And when you're dealing with a mother that's hurting, a father that's hurting, you also hurt along with it. So I just applaud him, and I thank him, and I thank for the merit as well, because they're out there on the streets. They're putting themselves out there. I've done what I thought I could do as far as, you know, volunteering. I go to the daycare centers and read and tell stories. The daycare center trying to turn them around. When they have career day, I'll try to go and, you know, give them my experience as a country boy coming up. And I'll go to the different schools and things like that, just when I get invited. All of this is not enough, but he is doing some hands-on things. He's doing feet in the street. That's what he's doing. And I applaud him for doing that. I just don't know how we can do it. And I've talked to Chief about what we can do, and we've dealt with the Charles, young man, the Charles, young man. And he is trying to work with mentoring. I volunteer. I give with the One Hundred Black Men. We have dealt with the young people and trying to, you just can't reach all of them. You can't get everybody. So it's going to take everybody in the community. There's old African proverb says, it takes a community to raise a child. And when I was growing up, it took that community, and that community was that, but it's not like that anymore. You can't say anything to anybody else's children like they did when I was growing up. My mother worked, and my father worked, and my grandmother was there. But when my grandmother was not there, we were there at the house. We had neighbors and things that looked out for us. We don't really have that anymore. So I just want to thank them for that. And because just from the shooting in our community, we have a lady this year that was killed in her store. You know, she was in her store. It wasn't bothering anybody. That was killed by a stray bullet. So we've got to do something about this gang violence. We've got to do something about this idiocy in our streets. And I don't know about, like I said, it used to be survival in certain areas, but now it is, it's almost like a thing that to be accepted, you have to be in that. And it's just so much Parks and Recs can do, just so much that the One Hundred Black Men can do, and different organizations, just so much they can do. But when we have people like this, I applaud them, and I want to do all I can to offer my support to do it. But I'm just, I'm baffled. I'm aloof. I just don't know about it because I never had to deal with it. I dealt with my own children. I reared my own children. And I know that some children don't have fathers in the house. Some children don't have mothers in the house. But I dealt with my own children, and I dealt with them, and I reared them. I sent all four of them to college, and they did real well. But I also know that there are others that can't do as well. And it was not, we didn't have any money. We were very poor. But I offered them myself, and that's where I've learned that's going to take it for children. You've got to put hands on them. I'm sorry that I rattled on with that, but this is dear to me.
No, I appreciate, yeah. Yeah, I appreciate your comments, Dr. Evans. I appreciate you sharing that. I think you hit the nail on the head. I think you, I think we all share your concern and your desire to see something done to better address this, and also the frustration that comes from not, from there not being a perfect solution out there. If there was a perfect solution out there, we would vote to fund it unanimously and move on. But that's just not, it doesn't exist. And so much of it, no matter how much the police or the school system or even community leaders and mentors get involved, you know, at the end of the day, the children are going home to their family. And if there's, if there's not the, if there's not a family there to go home to, then that creates a major, you know, major long-term deficit in that child's life. Fortunately, you, your children had that, and all of us did. So we will...
We can have a big impact, though, when it comes to making sure that the police department has plenty of detectives and plenty of cameras and plenty of police officers.
We're back to cameras. We're back to cameras.
I'm just saying, that's a part. That's a part of it. I mean, just like we said, it's, you know, I just believe in making sure that we got everything we can put out there when somebody commits one of these dangerous crimes, that they know that the law is coming, and it's just a matter of time. I mean, that's...
You know, it's always like, we always have to play catch-up to these situations and And I'm tired of playing catch-up. I'm tired of after the fact. You know, there's stuff that we can do right now. I understand everyone's saying that they're frustrated and they don't know what to do, but there is a solution. And the solution is, is you have to start being truthful. You have to start telling the truth about who the victims really are. I said this all last year. If all these victims were women, if all the victims were women, we'd start some sort of a coalition to help women. If all these victims were gay, we'd start a coalition to help gays or lesbians or whoever. But when it comes to African-American men, as strong as we may look, we are the most vulnerable individuals in this society. Last ones to be hired, first ones to get fired. We get the worst healthcare, we get the worst food, we get the worst education, and we're susceptible to violence at a whim. My best friend, who was murdered some 25 years ago, his killer is out right now. He was shot five times in the head. There's no life sentence, there's no death sentence, he's out. Able to have children, carry on. Of course, you know, 25 years of his life is gone, but he just snatched the life off the street. Just so happens that that young man's nephew is the same one who got shot in the arm and shot somebody trying to protect himself during a robbery. And I say to myself, "I don't like what happened, but I thank God that he had a gun." Now, being that we're the victims, black men being the victims, a lot of us are convicted felons. And by law, we're not supposed to have a gun. Did anyone ever think that that's the reason why you target young men? Because you know they have a criminal record? You know that the chances are very low that they will have a gun? I've said this comment here openly. I believe all black men in the city should have guns. All of them should protect themselves. Go look at the stats, look at who's getting shot. And I'm not trying to turn this place into the Wild, Wild West. But people are actually seeking out the weak in the community. I'm a big tough guy. But myself and my children are vulnerable. And I know it. And it scares me to death every time there's a gunshot. God rest the soul of my wife, it used to drive her insane hearing gunshots. You know, you hear gunshots in the neighborhood, the first thing you want to do is you want to pick up the phone and you want to start calling people you know and make sure they're okay. There's no way for anybody to live. This whole acceptance of genocide in this society is to the point now where as a city council member, we have to start, as a city council, as a city, we have to start recognizing that genocide is real. You know, I asked the young man about genocide, he told me it's what happened to the Jews during the Holocaust. Well, what the hell is this? This is a Holocaust! Young black men are constantly being the victim of assaults, of crimes, constantly. And we act like there's nothing we can do about it. We've got to do something. If we, even if we, even if we don't know all the answers, we have to keep trying. Zo, thank you for everything that you're doing. Keep your head up. Keep plugging away. To the leaders in the community, and this includes everybody who calls themselves a leader. Get out there. Get out there on the streets. Get out there and help. Stop sitting back waiting for your opportunity to get in front of a frigging camera. Go out there when no one's looking and help. These people in the street are crying for help. And so I thank you. Mike, I thank you for what you do. All I can say is nothing's gonna change, we got people that want to play as if they're leaders. But it's gonna take a whole lot of sacrifice to really lead. Our sons are in danger. And we can never stop, we can never rest. We have to keep protecting them, we have to keep loving them. And I'm done with it, I'm sorry. I know we have a meeting to continue, I'm sorry. You guys, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Gaskin. Anything else from the council? Okay. We will move on to petitions and communications. We have Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals' recommendation to amend the zoning ordinance to exempt restaurants and special event centers within the C-2 and C-3 zoning districts from the durational restrictions for portable concession stands.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. At work session this morning, we discussed amending the regulations for food trucks, we also refer to that as a portable concession stand. There's really two aspects for this, I know Mr. Edmondson wasn't able to join us, so I just wanted to make sure I covered it. The first is kind of carving out an exception for restaurants and event centers to allow them to have the food truck with no durational requirement. The second is to change the regulation from allowing 10 consecutive days and not to come back for 60 days. Staff had recommended too, Mr. Gaskins asked us to amend that to have food trucks be allowed three times per seven-day period to be in business in that manner. And Mr. Gaskins also asked us to look at transient merchants for people who are out selling produce. So we're gonna look at how to amend the ordinance when we prepare it to address that issue. But the direction now would be for the council to call for a public hearing to receive feedback on that and that would be on December the 22nd.
Move to public hearing.
Public hearing, second.
Have a motion to second to call for a public hearing, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that passes unanimously. We also have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals' recommendation to amend the sign ordinance to remove window area restrictions for ground-floor windows of vacant buildings within the C-2 district.
So visit LaGrange should come and ask us to look at some of the abandoned buildings that are downtown to try to prove the aesthetics of those buildings, to put window clings that would cover the majority or about 100% of that. The sign ordinance restricts that to only cover 20%. We did take that to the planning board after the mayor and council reviewed that several weeks ago. The planning board does not recommend to change that, but pursuant to our code, we do have to still move forward with the process by calling for a public hearing and again, that would be on December the 22nd.
Move to call for a public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion to second to call for a public hearing, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that passes unanimously. Under reports, do any council members have anything to report tonight?
Just a very brief report, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank the chief and his staff for demonstrating the rap that we experienced today. And I want to say that that is one of the reasons that our police department is still going strong and doing very well because we have steps in place rather than using their firearm. They have all these other steps in place before they pull the gun. And that has kept us, kept our citizens safe and has also kept us out of the news like some of the other cities that we know of. So I want to thank our police department and just give them some kudos because I just thank them so very much for having the training that they have. So thank you.
I want to take this time to also thank the city manager and staff for spreading out the Tiberi Park spaces on Bull Street. It's working wonders.
I would like to report that I'd like some clarification on the "we" part of your statement. You talk about "we," was that French for like "we"?
"We."
"We," when you said "we," the demonstration of "we."
Experienced.
"We," who's "we"?
I experienced it, I watched it.
Watched it from afar.
And will continue.
Just one report on a safety, on a safety issue, let me take this down for a second. On a safety issue, over at the LaGrange Housing Authority on Hanley Street, where they're having construction, I don't know if it's feasible, but they took out the sidewalk that goes down Hanley Street. So now when people go to the store, they pretty much are crossing at the blind section at the top of the hill or they're crossing or walking down the street and you've got blind traffic coming over the top of the hill. I want to know if it's possible for us to somehow put a barrier wall down the street to get them to the crosswalk so then they could cross and go to the store safely. I just noticed that a lot of people are walking in the street and I'm afraid that someone's gonna get hurt. Also, we need to double-check the lights in that area to make sure that it's visible. That people are able, because there's a lot of traffic going from the housing authority over to those stores.
Streetlights, are you talking?
Yeah, just double-check them. I don't think any are out, but I just want to make sure that...
There are not any dark spots?
If there are any dark spots, let's...
I'll have the electric crews run through there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Great. City manager report, Ms. Kelsey.
Just one tonight, Patrick Bowie presented kind of an update on our water and sewer projects and as part of that, we're going to need to make a budget amendment. Project cost, we estimate right now at $22.6 million. This, we will get a bond issued for to do this work. So staff would recommend putting in a budget for the revenue and the expense in that amount. Those would be defined out via project of what those costs are as it relates to the budget.
Need a motion?
Yes, the staff.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve the budget amendment, is there any discussion?
I said, one question for the city manager, is that pretty much of an in-and-out transaction? The bond money comes in, expenses go out, is it, does it carry much? Like, you know, how close in time is the borrowing versus the inflow?
Are we gonna have to reimburse that or is it reimbursed or is it just give us the cash? I can't remember if we talked through that or not.
We'll get the cash upfront.
Okay. So like the project next door, it's reimbursable, so as we spend it, then we can get it back. But Jeff just confirmed for me that the bond, they'll give us the cash upfront. But it'll probably be April or May, depending on when we close the deal for the bond. It will still, we'll have engineering expenses mostly up until that point. So you'll see under 10(b) a resolution allowing us to be reimbursed for those dollars. Does that help answer your question?
I think so, I guess it's...
There will be a cash infusion at the time the bond funds and then it will be paid out as the work goes. As the work is done, it'll be paid out. But that will be segregated money, it won't just be dumped in the general fund, it'll be segregated. And then in the future, there'll have to be a bond payment that will be placed in the budget to repay them.
So in, say if the project takes two, two, three years, I don't know what timeframe we're talking about, then those sort of numbers end up coming out even, but then we have the debt from that point on that we slowly pay off over many years?
Twenty years.
Okay.
Yeah, we've set it up for a 20-year payback.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So we have a motion second to approve the amendment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that passes unanimously. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Kelsey?
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on to resolutions, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute a First Amendment to the intergovernmental contract regarding conveyance of industrial property adjacent to Upper Big Springs Road.
So several months ago, we signed this intergovernmental contract for a prospect that's looking at purchasing land that the city owns on Upper Big Springs Road. The date in that contract was for it to close the end of November. They have asked to push that date out to mid-February. That's what this First Amendment does. It also requires them to pay a $50,000 earnest money deposit and they have done that at this time. Staff would recommend approval of this amendment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve the resolution, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that passes unanimously. Okay. We also have a resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute a reimbursement resolution regarding water and sewer facilities.
So like I said before, there will be engineering costs up until the time that we close on the bond to get those proceeds. So this resolution will just allow us to recoup those costs through those bonds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve the resolution, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that passes unanimously. We will move on to ordinances and under first reading of ordinances, we have an ordinance authorizing the city manager approval of a uniform purchasing manual.
An ordinance of mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend Chapter 5-12 of the code in order to authorize the city manager to approve a uniform purchasing manual to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And we also have a second reading of an ordinance, second reading, amending the Department of Public Services chapter.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the Department of Public Services chapter to remove the position of director, to modify the chapter to account for said removal, to remove from said department the maintenance and operation of the sanitary sewer system to provide responsibility for same to be with the director of utilities to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve, is there any discussion? All in favor approving the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that passes unanimously. Under board and agency appointments, we have the Historic Preservation Commission, three-year terms to succeed Skip Smith, Rocky Grace, and Jenny Sampson. All are active, all have requested to continue serving. Is there a motion?
So to reappoint.
Second.
Have a motion to second to reappoint, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that passes unanimously. And then under Troup County Parks and Recreation Commission, we have a three-year term to succeed Mark Mitchell, who is an active member of that board, whose only concern is the lack of pay, is that right? But...
You almost, you almost got it.
There has been a suggestion made, there has been a suggestion made that Councilman Edmondson might be a good member for that board. Councilman Edmondson, would you like to make a motion to reappoint Councilman Mitchell?
Hold hard. Reappoint.
I'll second it.
You know I owe you like three or four. I have a motion and a second to reappoint Councilman Mitchell to serve on the Troup County Parks and Recreation Commission, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that passes unanimously. Okay, anything else needs to come before the council tonight?
Just in the other business. First of all, thank you for allowing me to open up Sweetland Ice Skating Rink.
Thank you for, thank you for covering that as mayor pro tem, I appreciate that.
We had an interesting conversation, city manager and myself, talking with the gentleman that came up with the ice skating program from Columbus. It has come to our attention that the Cotton Mouth no longer have an ice skating rink in Columbus to skate on. Now, they canceled the season for this year, but I was thinking they may still want to put it in practice. I would like to officially recommend that city staff seek out the Cotton Mouth to practice...
practice on our ice skating rink. It is nowhere near big.
Sure.
Big enough.
For regulation play.
For regulation play. But it's ice and it's available during the week because Sweetland, I mean, they only skate on one on the weekends, right?
Well, they have, they have parties available during the week.
We do, we could schedule that.
So maybe the staff can look into that and, and talk and, and check and see if that's an available option.
Okay.
If that's a good suggestion. Yeah, and thank you for covering that. I, I, it looked like a great event and I saw a video from the event, from the grand opening, and then also, also saw a video that Dale Jackson had posted, actually out on, I guess he was walking on the ice, I'm not sure how he did that without skates, but he was out walking on the ice, filming it. And so it was, it looked like a, it looked like it was really well received. The facility looks beautiful. The city really did a nice job of, I think, doing the pavers, doing the tent and, and positioning it. So if you haven't been up there, I think it's worth going to see. And again, I just applaud the city staff for working so closely to, working so diligently to ensure safety measures were in place with the mask requirement, the limited, the limited numbers, et cetera, as we continue the COVID battle. So thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Gaskin. Closing comments, Ms. Van Schor.
I have a couple things, but y'all have already heard this before. We really appreciate Zoe and Pam and Tribe of Yujima for picking up litter and, and they've been doing that for a month. They did a lot. And they sent me pictures, and so we have told them that we're going to be providing them whatever they need to help them. So we're very grateful, very good news that they're doing that in many communities. We've also liked to extend an invitation to each one of y'all and everyone. We're going to have our Deck the City Hall's event Monday, November 30th, all day at City Hall. So we invite our city employees to come and put a Christmas ornament on the, the tree, the City Hall tree. And we'll have local grounds for cookies, for coffee and pastries from local grounds and then cookies from Crave Cookie Company. So everyone's invited, our employees. And then also, we wanted to show you a video that we had worked on, that video that you talked about earlier today, that Mayor Thornton helped to organize with all the mayors and the county commission chair and Coleman Thos for Wellstar West Georgia Health.
This year has been difficult for everyone. Many families have struggled with loss due to COVID-19.
But there is also much to be thankful for. And as we enter the holiday season, it's important to remember how blessed we are.
We are thankful for all the men and women who work in healthcare. These professionals have done a great job caring for our friends and families during this crisis.
And we're here at Wellstar West Georgia to say thank you to all the healthcare professionals in our community.
I can tell you firsthand how hard these men and women have worked. They have placed their own lives at risk to treat and care for others.
One way we can show our gratitude for them is to follow their advice.
So let's enjoy the holidays, but let's stay safe and help keep others safe.
We can all recite the advice by heart. Wash your hands, wear a mask, and avoid crowds.
But reciting that advice isn't enough. We have to practice it.
And if we do, then more of our loved ones will be with us for the next holiday season.
Happy holidays, be smart and stay safe.
And we love working collaboratively with our other cities and the mayors, and we will continue to promote Masking Creek County throughout the holidays and into 2021 until we don't need to. So thank you.
Well, you know, I know there's a tendency that people, they're tired. They're tired of hearing about this, they're tired, as we, as I am, but I think you have to continually be beating the drum.
I'm not tired of living.
And I'm not tired of living either, and we've got, we've got to keep, you know, being safe and, and doing these, these smart practices and trying to, trying to continue the battle. And I appreciate, as you all know, how closely we work with the other two cities as well, and the county and the hospital. I mean, we, we, we really do try to work to have consistent messaging, and we have from the very beginning of this crisis, when we all adopted the GMA model ordinance, a week before Governor Kemp did his executive order, all three cities and the county adopted the model ordinance. So I mean, we, from the very beginning, we have, we have really tried to work collaboratively and, and I appreciate the other gentlemen in the video. But I'll also tell you, we've got a wonderful staff, they can make anybody look good in, in the videos. So Katie and Adam and, I'm looking at Nathan when I say that, they can make anybody look good. We stand adjourned. Oh, well, you know, before we do, Tiara, thank you for staying till the very end. Everyone else abandoned us. I appreciate you staying with us till the end.
You prevented us from getting rowdy.
I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving, we stand adjourned.